Apologies for not being able to join you tonight. I am actually at an economic development conference in Lacey, Washington. But ultimately, I'm the one who's sad because I don't get to have work tonight. So getting into the branding scope of work, this is in response to Council Goal 1.1, which is to identify a process.
Waited to, I'm sorry, did you hear all that? I had my microphone up.
Barely, you're good.
You're good now.
Okay, I'll restart. So apologies for not being with you tonight. I'm at an economic development conference in Lacey, Washington. But getting into the scope of work, this is in response to a council goal. Council Goal 1.1, which is to identify a process for community branding and RFP and scope of work associated with that. And staff has been taking this through a lot of public involvement through city council, through Economic Development Committee. There have been quite a bit of meetings about this topic in this calendar year in particular. And so now we have before you a draft of the scope of work, which is really going to set the outline for what we're asking, whatever branding agency or consultant that we bring on board, what we're really asking them to do and how we're asking them to craft their responses when we eventually go out for a public bid. So we're really looking for feedback on the process that's laid out in this two-page scope of work and also the objectives that it tries to get the consultant and the project to achieve. So that's really what it's about. And then, once we have the scope of work, which is one of the main components of a request for proposal or RFP, then we will put the rest of the document together and issue the RFP out for public bid. That itself is about a four to six-week process depending on a number of things. Yeah, and then we would be ready to hire a branding agency at that point. So before I go into the details of the draft scope of work, are there any questions?
NJ, I did just want to clarify real quick. From start to finish, an RFP will usually take about three months. The process, I think you're outlining, the four to six weeks is actually to get the bids back. But start to finish approval for council, you're usually looking at closer to three months. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, I do have one. So in an application, are there specific questions then besides this that we ask?
Yeah, and there's also, there's an interview component when you go out for a public bid too. So staff would interview the consultants that have applied and they also submit, depending on the project, it can be a number of, it could be a wide range of page length. But yeah, we're asking them to submit certain criteria. So one example for this kind of project might be, we ask them to submit a specific community engagement plan or a draft project schedule. Some projects, you ask for a budget, that kind of thing.
There is no budget, not calling out a budget?
Alex, if I'm correct, this is currently budgeted for about $50,000 for the whole process, right?
So yes, that's what's in the budget. There are pros and cons to calling out your budget in a budget document. If you call it out, you're pretty much guaranteed to get a proposal that would be that much. If you don't, it's not, they can't necessarily find that information if they're savvy and go through your budget, but you might get a little bit of a sharper proposal. So we typically don't put the dollar amount in the proposals.
Does the dollar amount, I mean, when they propose, is it based on the number of hours that they estimate they're going to put into this job? So the budget can, their price can vary over time? If we use them more, they come to more meetings, or we ask them to do more? Or is their budget like a $50,000 amount to do everything that we're asking?
So typically speaking, yes, they're going to charge you an amount per hour. But that's, that is also the point of having a very detailed and thorough scope. You're talking about the number of public meetings you want them to be at, probably the number of, you know, public engagement, you know, maybe open houses or the annual town meeting or meetings with staff. I mean, it's not that things don't change a little bit sometimes during, you know, during the course of the project, depending on what happens. However, you do the best you can to lay all that out in advance so that you are getting a true cost from the consultant team. In a request for proposal process, we don't often, again, ask for price. So generally speaking, you are going with the proposal you find is most qualified. Then from there negotiating a price. If in fact you don't then come to an agreement on price, you can go to the next qualified bidder. That is the requirement with certain types of services like engineering. That is not 100% required here. But, you know, you can go that route. Again, it's just sometimes putting price in, you're just going to get something that's exactly the amount your budget is.
So maybe on task one, project management, where it says the scope in within budget, maybe she, maybe it should say proposed cost or proposed budget from the consultant versus within budget. That means that you're giving them a budget. That's how it sounded to me.
So I think that's just indicating that whatever the budget is that you've established, that they will stay within it. And bear in mind too, that this is the scope of work. The entire RFP document, there's a lot more to it than this. This is the scope of work that gets inserted into the RFP document. You have a lot of other sections and criteria that lays out how the proposal should look, how many pages, what the content of it should be so that you can make it comparable from proposal to proposal. So you're comparing apples to apples. So this is, again, just the scope. This is really the meat of what you're getting and that's why we wanted you all to look at it. But then there's all these kind of more legalese, so to speak, parts of the RFP that then get, this gets essentially sandwiched in between. There's more to it that spells out some of what you're talking about.
Right, I'm just going to say, if it was just this, I would, if I was going after that, that would say, within what budget? You know, so that was my question.
Right, well, and again, I think the point is, you know, do you want to show your hand by telling them that your budget or not?
Right.
There. Andrew?
Sorry. Yeah, since we're on the topic of the budget, just in anticipation of questions from the EDC, so that I can help answer them, what, where is that 50K in the budget coming from? And what would it possibly have been used for? Why? Just because they're going to, EDC has been pushing council and staff about, well, we can do a lot of the work ourselves. I just want to be able to answer, like, it's not earmarked for anything else. Makes sense?
Right, it's not earmarked for anything else. I mean, I, no, no, I mean, it was put in the budget. I wouldn't say there was anything that was, you know, that it was taken away from, so to speak. I mean, as with anything, when you budget for something, you inherently don't budget for something else. So I think you can make that argument for anything throughout the budget. But no, I don't, like, I wouldn't say that it was like, you know, oh gosh, because we did this, I'm, you know, giving up this thing overheating up. That's, that was not a consideration. I think that happened. It was, you know, this was a council goal and we really make a point of making sure that council goals are funded in the budget that they are, you know, voted on and approved for.
Other than, of course, my $50,000 raise.
Oh, yes, that. You're NJ's, NJ's bonus.
Yes. Are there any other questions?
Yes, the EDC and us can do a lot of legwork and help. Well, I'm hoping that somehow through that, they will be able to find, or will be able to find times when maybe we can work with the branding company and save some money or do some stuff ourselves and try to help that throughout the process, if possible. We can, especially with the county-wide branding project through CET, if there's things that we can do to help or we see as a good fit, then we can hopefully cut back a little bit.
Of course. And, you know, one thing in general I want to lay out too is that a lot of this work is still going to be vested within the community, both elected representatives, committee members and the, you know, community at large at community events. And so it, you know, the bulk of, you know, deciding like the value and direction of where we want to go, that's, that's going to be by SCAPUS at large, not necessarily some consultant. And that's, that's really what this whole thing tries to measure. What a consultant is really adding is just their professional expertise to SCAPUS's already set community values.
Well, and I think also, as we've discussed, you know, the EDC is going to serve as the essentially stakeholder advisory committee throughout this process. So they will be involved. And I know that, you know, Paul is, I think, working with the county on their branding process as well and is also sitting on the Economic Development Committee, so that will have a connection there. What we've generally found with consultant teams too is that, you know, they're doing a lot of the legwork, like producing documents, preparing for meetings, preparing for open houses, things that, you know, I just don't think are really, quite frankly, reasonable to ask committee members to do for free. I mean, it is a lot of work. And so when, you know, when we as staff are looking at consultants as well, we just have to be realistic also about, you know, levels of expertise in terms of branding. You know, this isn't something that we have in-house and also just staff capacity. We have a really lean staff and so this is going to take a lot of legwork. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Yeah, just as far as the structure goes, the, the scope of work, the requirements, some of those will be engagement with the different bodies that are involved. That's where their feedback will come in and then the consultant will make sense of it. Put it into a understandable format or presentable format for all of us. So to your point, Joe, about engagement from the other committees and everything, that is what the consultant or part of the requirements that the consultant will have, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
My only other thing is that I would encourage staff to include a cost proposal requirement in the RFP, just so that we can, you know, try to gauge what we're looking at for costs more upfront from the different proposers.
That's fine. We can factor that in. I just wouldn't put in our budget.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Just, but we can, we can say, you know, yes, we'd like to see cost proposals and it'll be X amount of, you know, the points allotted to the, essentially the winning consultant team. But I just wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't include our budget.
I just feel like it gives a lot of useful.
I agree.
Perspective upfront, you know what we're dealing with. And if it's something that we're, you know, way out of, you know, budget on, we're going to know that sooner than later also. So I just think it offers some, some guardrails, so to speak.
By looking at this too, NJ, is this going to be our primary focus at our next town hall meeting, annual town meeting? Or is this just one little bit of it? Or is this going to be kind of the focus, like this Latin park? This could be more branding?
Well, NJ, I think it kind of depends on the timing, correct? I mean, we love for this to be a component of the ATM, but it, we, we're not really sure where we're going to be in the process either. So we have called out the ATM specifically, I believe. It's something we would like to, you know, have them present at. But what exactly that looks like, we won't know until we get further into the process.
Fast, we could do it earlier if everything falls in line or we, if not, then it'll be later, but.
Correct.
Would be our.
Right. And yeah, a lot of.
One other thing I forgot to mention too is that there, one of the reasons that we did this and that we wanted to hire a consultant, just I think context is important, is because there are so many different opinions about the branding and we were hoping that a consultant, a professional facilitator would be able to bring us all together in a structured way and we'd be able to accomplish more. So I think it's important that that is in everybody's head too.
Right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, you mentioned that the county, and I heard the county is also doing an effort. Are, is there any other, are we repeating some of the efforts that is being done by the county consultant? That's, and if we can muddy up, maybe share some information with their collecting. I know they're collecting information countywide, but maybe the information they're collecting here in SCAPUS that can be handed to the new consultants. I'm just.
I do think having Paul on both, he is on the CET Advisory Board Committee for Branding and then he's on our EDC. So he will be able to see that if there's anything that they, he feels that they could bring to ours. They have confidence.
I do think it would be beneficial for our consultant team to have an understanding of what the county is doing. I do want to be mindful that that consultant team, for various reasons, may not just want to hand over a bunch of their work to our team. But I do, but I do think some communications to understand what's being completed by their team would be really helpful. So I definitely want to ensure that line of communication is open. And again, Paul being on both, I think we will have that. But I, I do want to be really mindful of that. I believe CET's focus is more on tourism. NJ, is that accurate? Okay. So I do think we're going to have a bit of a different. Oh, go ahead.
That too is going to be like the, the emphasis of the data that you would be getting from that project.
Well, I do think they might, you know, and at the end of the day, they might be emphasizing something that you're not necessarily focusing on, you know, when you get down to it. But I do think having that communication on both projects will be important.
Why not just add that in as a requirement for?
Right, I agree.
Because I would rather it come from a neutral professional source that's going to be presenting anyway. A structured format, if that makes sense.
With these types of contracts, like we retain control over like the timeline, right? Like, let's say we want it, we closed the contract or signed the contract with the consultant and we wanted to wait another four weeks. They, they were ready to submit their final report. We wanted to wait another four weeks to see what company came out with.
Right, so we would ultimately control the schedule to the extent it's controllable, right? I mean, sometimes things happen and, you know, delays will, will happen. But yes, generally speaking, in terms of, you know, the release of information, when things are completed, we do have a lot of say over that. So there's, you know, there's no reason why you can't, you know, say, hey, you need to put this on pause while we do XYZ and get back to you. I mean, we've certainly done that with other projects and it's, you know, definitely something we can do here if necessary.
Like, and I like that, you know, you have the town hall in here that buys us quite a bit of time, I would think, on any stuff, so.
Yes.
I think timewise, EDC or CET, we're a couple months behind, so it shouldn't play out that they should have everything finalized before.
Right.
And again, it is mostly tourism and so I think there's a lot more SCAPUS than that. So that will be a factor.
Right. All right, so if it's okay with everyone, do we want to start walking through the scope of work?
One more question, NJ, real quick.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, my comment was going to be related to task 2.3, so I will save it until you walk through.
Okay, thank you. All right, so task one is pretty similar to the language that we include in our other type of consultant projects. It ensures that there's ongoing communication and coordination meetings with city staff. With the 50-year plan, we do every two weeks. That moves around sometimes, just based on, you know, if we have, like in the upcoming fall, we have quite a few 50-year plan stakeholder advisory committee, pretty much only a month separating each one. So we're meeting a little more often for things like that. In the summer, we tend to cancel meetings. But generally speaking, you know, we, we meet bi-weekly and so we would have to decide what is most appropriate for this kind of work. But ongoing project coordination meetings would be included and then other basic things administratively, like invoicing the city monthly, things like that. So moving into task two, the thought behind this was really a point that EDC has been on for a while and that's that SCAPUS already has quite a bit of history. It's not, it's, it's not as if this community's values are this unknown commodity that we have, you know, we're completely starting fresh from, you know. The city does have a standing vision statement that was adopted in 2016. The 50-year plan this calendar year just approved the 50-year plan vision statement. There's also just a lot of conversations this year in particular that have happened at city council, EDC and staff level around community branding. So task two is really meant to bring the project consultant up to board so that they understand and are aware of the work that has already been done in the community because it's, it's certainly significant.
Did you have a question then on 2.3?
Yeah, so I guess my recommendation on 2.3 would actually be to maybe have the EDC and the Parks and Rec Committee initially create that asset inventory and then have the, the consultants work to round that out or dig a little bit deeper. But we could save some time there potentially.
Um, one thing too, I mean, boundary is, is a one-mile extended. I mean, I'd like to see Rocky Point, you know, that's a huge national, like a riding bike trails to SCAPUS Bay as well. Those are things that we, you know, might aspire to be more. So I don't know if you'd say five miles or how you incorporate those, but.
Yeah, I think that's a good point because, you know, certainly when people think of SCAPUS, they don't think of the precise jurisdictional lines that outline our city limits. So I think that's a good point to keep in mind for, especially for the asset inventory.
Yeah, if we want to be known as bikes, I mean, if, hey, we want to have a bunch of bike trails and bike centers and charging units. I mean, then we want to stress that we have the Rocky Point Trail. If we want to do kayaks and paddle boards and start working on Chapman Landing, then we probably want to stress also SCAPUS Bay.
Well, and all those destinations bring people to the closest city for resources, so.
And if they come to those and then we eventually have a hotel, then it brings them to SCAPUS.
Well, and the great thing is too, is that because we actually, we are working on the CGI videos and the Parks Master Plan, some of the committees, I, I would say, have already done at least some of maybe this initial work, you know, in terms of EDC talking about areas to film for the videos and the Parks Committee working on, obviously, the Parks Master Plan. So I think some of this information's already been compiled and is available. And really, that has been completed by the committee. So we could certainly start with that and then add to it.
And yeah, with the temple trails up right outside of town, they're two, three miles. I mean, and I want to, we've got trails if we're going to really walk in and stuff and.
Right.
Trails, so one mile is pretty, not very far.
Yeah. So moving into task three, as I mentioned earlier, this, you know, for, for people to buy into the community brand, it has to really be authentic to the community. And so what we're going to, you know, what this scope of work does is that it's, you know, the consultant is really doing a lot of like the coordination and technical expertise. They're, they're not really going to be the ones that are coming in and trying to tell us what the SCAPUS brand and identity ought to be. That's really going to be driven from stakeholder involvement, decision maker meetings, sort of like you all are used to by this point with the 50-year plan. And, and then potentially, like we talked about earlier at the annual town meeting, but certainly some other events depending on the time of the year.
Yeah, I think they, from the parks one at the basketball games worked real well. People coming in and can do signs or football and volleyball if it's in the fall. But I think it was nice seeing them at those events.
I think they refer to those as pop-up events. We could add, if there's, if it doesn't say that specifically, we could add something about that.
Yeah.
Catching people where they already are.
Correct. Exactly. Not trying to bring them to City Hall.
Yes.
So I also want, would like to see if they can, when they're talking about community, be, their outreach can be in other languages. Just make sure that there's more specificity in the outreach. And also in their branding.
And I would just add, if the consultants would want to capture kind of a non-SCAPUS view of the town, like folks from out of town coming in, the SCAPUS Bay watershed has their fall plant sale. I think it's like October 14th. And the majority of those people are coming just for that, out of town.
Yeah.
I don't know if this. I don't know if this will be done by then. I don't think we would have someone hired by October 14th. And maybe spring if it wasn't. But yeah, but we could certainly look at any kind of events they have that would bring in people. Yeah.
Right.
Can they ask people outside of SCAPUS, what do they think of SCAPUS when they hear of it? Oh, it's up in Washington, isn't it?
Exactly.
Always get that.
Yeah, what? That's what they say. Yeah, what?
Yeah.
Um, so any other questions or comments on task three? I thought I heard one come up.
Maybe just pop-ups if you add that to three.
Yeah.
For sure.
Pop-up events.
Yeah, and exactly like Counselor Grayson said, it allows, it allows us to catch people where they already are and get more people involved that aren't traditionally active in local government spaces, which just gets you more people. All right, so then moving to task four. So this is going to be the brand selection. So we've sort of gotten the consultant up to speed with the history of SCAPUS and then the history of our conversations around branding. We've had a good bit of stakeholder and community input and now it becomes time in task four to start to narrow down a brand. So I'm going to go through a little more specifically for task four, the individual task items. So the first is identify a, a set of feasible brand themes, ideally about three to five. And they present them as options to EDC, which as Alex mentioned, is, we're proposing is going to be the stakeholder advisory group for this project. And the idea being that at this point, we have the opportunity to vet out. So in terms of how realistic the brand is, does it seem authentic to SCAPUS? You know, is there, is there momentum behind this? Is there economic advantage to this? So that allows us to, you know, have the list, look at them all on the same table, but then again, start to narrow down the list. And then, once the EDC has gone through that exercise, which might take more than one meeting, just to really get through all of them and do some due diligence, they would come to city council and provide a presentation on the brand that was ultimately ident, like the one brand theme that was ultimately identified, but then also give you all the information of what other options were considered to see if something else makes more sense.
Hey, so that 4.1, I like most of the way it's written, but there's, it's all like present tense. I would think in like branding, we also want to talk about who we want to be. I wonder if it would help to have, just to, some of that last sentence, maybe say, reflect like where we want to go.
And tomorrow?
Yeah, like, one of the discussions has been, you know, the tech hub, granted, I never have them, but with Omic, you know, there's something there that could be part of branding, so.
Right.
There yet, but.
That branding can get you there if you, if you word it properly and like this is future. You know, you'll get there instead of just saying what we are in the path, you know. Will drive us. So let's think, yeah, word it to where we feel that we want to go somewhere. We can make a brand that kind of pushes us where we want to go.
Yeah. No, and I agree and branding is a, it's a hard balance to strike too because you want it to be authentic to who you are today or else people aren't really going to buy into it. But at the same time, it's, you know, your brand and identity is sort of supposed to serve as a, as a fundamental guiding light for making critical decisions about the direction of the community. So it's, it's certainly a balance. So I think including language to both makes sense.
Yeah, I see this. Obviously, everyone calls us a bedroom community and do, do we want to, you know, embrace that and kind of stay with that? Or do you want to, no, we want to change that. We don't want to be seen as that.
So on, on that topic too, I think, I, this is a little bit off topic for what we're at right now, but I think we do want to be careful about tying ourselves to things that could go away, like businesses do. So something to keep in mind.
I think it will come out, you know, what most people feel of SCAPUS and everybody will have similar close feelings.
Doesn't have to be like Omic, it can be like nature to innovation.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of that came out already in that initial survey work we did with the 50-year plan. Right, so I'm hoping we can build off that good amount.
Right.
So a quick question.
Any other, go ahead.
Yeah, and so the, the 4.2, where it says, the last sentence, the presentation should also include the brief analysis of high-quality brand themes. Is that the themes that you're talking about in paragraph number one?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So this is, this is, task 4.2 is really where the EDC is asked to explore each of the, you know, real, most realistic and advantageous options that the consultant identified with community feedback.
There. Yeah, so I just have one, I have one, another question actually, after reading through this. Does, is there a definition or a standard for what brand theme actually is? Because that could have, I just imagine that having a different meaning for different people.
We should define it. We think.
Yeah.
When I look at it, I just, my first thought is, okay, what does it include? Because what Alex might be thinking is a brand theme might be different than Isaac, I'm doing the mayor. So if, I mean, if it's an industry standard thing, then maybe that's not necessary. But for me not being in that line of work, I, I don't know what that means.
I obviously understand a logo and newsletter template, you know, that's, okay, that's brand, what is that, but what else?
I mean, I think I know what it would mean, but I don't want to think.
And, you know. And you know, an example would be like outdoor recreation or high tech and innovation or um you know, a c- a community that really gathers around the arts. Um so the, you know, the, these are the kinds of things that I'm thinking of when I think of brand theme, but I certainly think it makes sense to define it.
So uh NJ, so in five point one, you're not really asking, I mean, you say you may include analysis of proposals of a slogan, theme events and architectural design standards, so you're not, it's not some, that's kind of like an add-on, you're not really requesting that, right? Because if you want to request it, it should be, instead of the may, it should be like a shall.
Right, and then let me, yeah, let me.
One thing, but one thing I would point out though too with with RFPs and specifically is that typically speaking, while we are trying to be specific enough to get proposals that really get at what we want, usually you're trying to also give them enough flexibility that if they feel like there's something important that we didn't point out or something that they don't recommend that we did, that they can actually put that in their proposal.
Add-on.
So yeah, so so do we, so we typically say like, we think, you know, yeah, this, this result may include X, Y, Z, but we're trying to give them flexibility too. Um that's usually why with these proposals, um that's kind of benefit of this type of contracting method is that you do get their honest opinion about how they think you should complete the project. So that's why we're not being so like definite or specific.
I get that, but it, but I think what what I'm hearing from the council here is that we, it would be great to have specific uh specifications to see what they were proposing.
Well, so, but I would want to understand, I know you were saying you wanted to be more definite on brand theme, but you're saying this list, implementation strategies, you are, are you talking about the strategies or the theme?
But no, because it says here, it says this may include, so you're asking may is like not, it's not a requirement.
Are you talking about about five point one?
Yes.
Mm hmm.
And so if you were requiring it, then it, so the may should be a shell. Um and so they can be also included as part of the scope of work. But if you're not going, if it's just an add-on, it's like, okay, well, may, and it's a plus. I I've been hearing that we want specific, then we're adding like, oh, you may add these things, so I'm.
I don't, I guess I wasn't looking at, I guess I was not looking at those as optional. I was looking at those as examples of what that could ultimately be. Because you're saying you, we want you to propose strategies to us on developing the brand implementation. So we in our head are saying, this is an example of what we think those could be, but we want to hear from you as to what you recommend.
The other thing too about just the the RFP process in general is that, you know, these, these consultants are going to be giving us their best possible shot at at getting hired on with with Scappus. So um you know, they're they're gonna propose what they think is is the best possible plan um to to get a good product.
I don't think they're just gonna help us develop a brand, they're gonna then say, how do you enact it? How do you develop it? How do you, if it was to bring rest, how are you gonna find monies? And if it's parks and recreation, are they gonna help us give us ideas of what we need to do to go in and boom?
Correct, and this is one of the key areas where the expertise of the pro, you know, branding professionals really comes into play. Um because, you know, I think, I I think we could, to a certain extent, we could do some workshops in, you know, internally and and get feedback and be like, this is our brand. But then, you know, we're not branding professionals, so we don't know exactly what to do with that and how to implement our brand so that people, you know, they they buy it and they they believe in it.
I just, I'm sorry, I just think that um it's gonna, if you want to compare apples to apples, it'd be clear for an RFP to say, this is the scope of work, what we're asking for, what do you, what's your price? And then they give their price. So when you're doing the the selection, you're comparing, but you know, a company A, company B and company C is providing with the.
I'm gonna read it is, this will include, but not necessarily all of those. It will include an analysis, some of those. Say, this shall include proposals from a few of these categories. I mean, me, they will do that, maybe not for every single one of those, but don't come up with some specific proposal.
And then too, like the the very next sentence says, this will need to include the creation of a new city logo and an easy to use template for the city's monthly newsletter. So there are at least a few specific things we are um, you know, asking that it certainly be in the final product.
Yeah, I, when you read it all together, it gets a little bit of clarity. I understand what you're.
Anything else?
I just, I've got a general question. Have any other communities in Columbia County undergone this exercise? I mean, I understand there's the broader county effort, but have any of the other cities undergone something like this recently?
Not that I'm aware of. When I, we reached out on the OCCMA list serve for examples, none of them came back from Columbia County.
And we got, um I'm forgetting the city at the moment, but we got one response um of someone who put together an RFP, but they issued it in January of twenty twenty and then something happened.
I think it was Dayton.
Yes, it was, and then something happened in March twenty twenty, and so the project got derailed.
Right. Didn't we have one other example?
I thought, I think it was from uh CET here in the county, but that's, that's what.
Okay, but yeah, the county, right, right.
Yeah, not from another city.
You have the city vision statement of twenty sixteen, would this look at that as well? Or or is that vision statement the one they will use? Or is that something that could get revisited after this, by when we do our brand? We might then say, hey, look, our vision has been a little changed, we need to revisit that.
I think it certainly could. I'll defer to Alex on that one and how that would work.
I mean, I it, I think this just really depends on, do you want them to essentially bite off redoing your vision statement with everything else? I mean.
Think go through their branding, looking at our vision statement there, and then at the end, if he would then look and say that it's.
I mean, I think the thing with this branding exercise that we've run into a couple times, in my opinion, is just that it's been kind of the chicken or the egg, what comes first. Um and this is a rather nebulous project. Um it's, quite frankly, it was kind of a hard um scope of work to put together. It's a hard thing to talk about in terms of results and what comes out of it, because everyone kind of has a little bit of a different idea. Um so, you know, I I really think do, you could do the vision statement as part of it, you could do it afterwards. Um but again, it's one of those things where that's just a tough call on the order of how you want to do things.
I think I'd want to change it before, without seeing them.
Sure.
Sometimes it's easier to, um in my experience, easier to think about what you want as your final product and then work backwards and not be too prescriptive when you're trying to engage, you know, consultants. I mean, a lot of this, in all honesty, could probably be like, this is what we're trying to achieve, tell us how you're gonna do it.
Right, no, and and I think some amount of flexibility is is really important, and that's also why I think an RFP process is good, because you're asking for a proposal on how they think you should do it and what the best way to do it is, and that's why you are giving them that flexibility.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
It's true.
And that's also what helps helps them stand out against each other.
That's true too, yes.
I think we had mentioned, like, uh at a previous meeting, making it a council goal following this process um to to review the vision statement, because it was in twenty sixteen and there is some language that maybe this council wasn't a part of creating.
Sure.
Um just err on the cautious side of using that vision statement as like a real, true, solid, current document, because it's, it's not.
Yeah, no, I think it's definitely worth taking another look at, absolutely.
But not for the consultants to really lean on that vision statement.
Right, and you know, and we actually did that with a committee, if I'm recalling correctly, without a consultant. So that's another thing too. I mean, we could, I think we could certainly just revisit that process and do it ourselves.
Yep.
There's that too.
I like that, don't, don't lean on that, that's.
We're hoping to do a revision based on your process.
Absolutely.
Um timeframe then, you'll um take some adjustments. Do we then vote on this or get approval or will it go out?
So, you know, this is, um obviously, we just have a work session tonight, so, I mean, there's not gonna be like a necessarily formal approval, but we, we've written down a lot of your feedback. Um I think just to, just to kind of wrap things up with five point one, um what we could do, NJ, is you could simply say, you know, we would really like the analysis to, or the the implementation strategies, we'd like it to include these things. But if you have a recommendation on something you think would be better for some reason, please include that and explain it, something like that, just so you get something a little bit more definitive. Um I think we've taken some good notes um from you all on how you'd like to adjust this. And I think at this point, we'd just like to get it going and and put it out and see what we get. Um so um I don't know if there's any other feedback beyond that, but we've certainly taken a lot of notes and we're ready to go.
On two point three, there was mention of going beyond the one mile. Did we decide a number or?
We said five.
Five, because.
NJ did that. Appropriate.
But we can also look at the maps and see if there was anything that that misses.
Really, I know it's seven to eight gallons, but.
And if you're at a just gap.
Yeah.
Probably.
Right.
I just didn't want, someone had mentioned Scappus Bay, and I just want to make sure that's actually included in.
Well, why don't we just look at a map and see where some of those landmarks get us? And we'll kind of base it off that. And we could also say approximate or something like that too, to not just pin us down.
It might be easier just to look at landmarks that you guys know about, know that you may want them to.
Okay.
Rather than doing a mileage list out of the land, that may be a concern.
Where the the boundaries.
That reaches to this point.
Yeah, from Rocky Point to Scappus Bay.
Yeah, basically, anything in there that seems significant and worthy, then.
Across the river, don't go over the mountain.
There you go. How's that work? All right.
Sorry, can I just add one more thing? This is kind of more of a comment than a recommendation, but it does, it does read, it's ve, it's very economic focused, which I understand, going to the EDC, and it mentions economic benefits many times. But I do think branding is also important for livability, healthy communities. And I, maybe we, it would help to have some of that language, but um.
I have a question. So would you add like another section or what are like just keywords in a certain place you'd want to add or?
Yeah, thanks, Megan. It's a four point one. I think just that last sentence again, I just want the consultants to kind of think about, not just about like, we're just a small community, I mean, how much can you really increase?
Mm hmm.
Economy.
The livability of.
Sure.
And do we want to increase it?
Exactly.
Right, and how much, yeah, and and I think there's an element, you know, of people who are, who really don't want to see it grow a lot.
Really isn't for me about livability.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stay here as, you know, that feel, but wanted to look nice, wanted to.
Oh, I agree.
Technically.
Have amenities.
Yeah, and I'd like to add in again inclusivity.
Mm hmm.
Be a source of community pride.
Okay.
Great.
Any other more comments or questions?
I guess we're good.
All right, thank you all. Apologize again for attending remotely.
Oh, you're fine. Have fun.
That's all right. Thanks, NJ.
Yep, bye bye.
Thank you.